Good evening and I'd like to wish everyone a wonderful holiday season and a happy healthy new year. With that being said, this will pass any previous statements in line.
Good evening. This meeting is being held in accordance to the local public meetings act and Jane as in tenfold for dash six F seven. Proper public handle of the meeting is published in the papers from January twenty twenty two. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is only violation of the open public meetings act, the local board education request that they make a statement at this time. The board wishes to thank those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be brought to the center board at later date on C A T channel seventy seven and five channel seventy six. The full meeting recording will also be made available on board tabs which can be accessed on the official homepage. The local board education is committed to preserving the form of the public process and is mindful that we live in the electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communications devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting. And if use of the devices is extenuating, we ask that you please save the meeting room and begin to do that personally.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Captain Hurd, here.
Ms. Miller, here.
Mr. Bellator, here.
Ms. Conner, here.
Mr. Philbrook, here.
Ms. McGurk, here.
Ms. Simon, here.
Ms. Security, here.
Ms. Angel, here.
Okay, next we'll move on to the recognition portion of our meeting. We're thrilled to have both of our members and the several students of them on here tonight. And with that being said, I ask the meeting over to our assistant superintendent, Ms. Radmanis Gomez.
Good evening, esteemed members of our board of education, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, administrators, faculty, students, and their special guests, their families. What an honor it is to stand before you and introduce our talented principals as they take the podium to share detailed information and anecdotes about the students being honored here this evening. Tonight, we acknowledge and celebrate the hard work of our students as they are honored Students of the Month for both the months of October and November. These young people worked hard and put in all of their greatest ever. They were determined to excel, and here they are tonight. Everyone in this room and those who will undoubtedly watch from the comfort of your home are so very proud of each and every one of you. Each of our principals will celebrate both of their school's selections and pause for picture opportunity. As is always in our process, we will begin with the Joseph F. Brandt School Principal, Mr. Barton. He will then introduce the Connors Principal, Ms. Addy, and she will follow the same pattern, introducing our next presenters, Vice Principal Barnes, Principal Sorfing, and Principal Pica Peitara of Wallace, Hoboken Middle, and Hoboken High School. Again, thank you for being here with us tonight, and with that, I turn the podium over to Principal Barton.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, I would like to ask Naomi Baker to come join me at the podium. Congratulations to Naomi Baker, our Joseph F. Brandt Elementary School Student of the Month for October two thousand twenty-two. She was nominated by her fifth-grade homeroom teacher, Ms. Samuel. Ms. Samuel said Naomi has endless reasons for being nominated for Student of the Month. Her respect and kindness displayed in the classroom are a wonderful example for her peers to follow. She is always willing to help a student with a problem during math or with peer editing of an essay during line of talks. She is also always determined to complete all work to her best abilities. Not only is she a brilliant learner, she is also a beautiful artist. Her artistic abilities are incorporated in as much of her learning as possible. Keep shining. Ms. Samuel said the following quote from Anthony DeAngelo, "It's a perfect example of Naomi's personality. Wherever it goes, no matter the weather, always bring your own sunshine." I definitely agree with that statement. Naomi has a quiet confidence that lets her compassion and hopefulness shine through. Upon one of my most recent visits to Holman three thirteen, the students were working on group projects for their novel study of oral learning. Naomi's artistic prowess was given the opportunity to shine with the contributions to the poster her group was making. The shading choices she made when coloring the blue hair of her main character to show character traits really brought her group's project to life. While restoring her love of the arts, Naomi maintains a straight A's in all of her subject areas. Her love of the arts has not just confined to visual arts. Last year, she had part of the district musical, Matilda, and tomorrow night, her musical talents will be on display at the annual elementary school's winter concert. Ms. Samuel went on to say, "Nominating Naomi was such an easy decision due to her laughter and the spark of joy she carries around herself. Her presence is such an important asset to our brand student body as it displays leadership." She holds a strong reputation throughout Brandt as she is known for her respectful attitude. Outside of school, Naomi is passionate about drawing, writing, and singing. Her favorite musical artist is Sia, her favorite sport is tennis. Naomi aspires to be an artist and attend UCLA. When asked how it felt to receive this honor and an example of her wonderful and humble personality, Naomi chose to give credit to our school as a whole by saying, "Our school has a free and easy atmosphere to make learning fun." That atmosphere is absolutely due to students just like Naomi. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in a round of applause for our Joseph F. Brandt Elementary School student of the month. And at this time, I would like to ask Teddy Howard to come join me at the podium. Congratulations to Albert "Teddy" Howard, our Joseph F. Brandt Elementary School Student of the Month for November two thousand twenty-two. Teddy was nominated by multiple staff members, by Ms. Alberto for physical education, and by Ms. Lynn for world language. Ms. Alberto said, "Teddy is always ready to listen and loves to attempt new challenges. He demonstrates good sportsmanship, movement skills, and is always prepared to learn. He is an example for all of those in his class." Ms. Lynn said, "Teddy has excellent participation and always stays on task. He always greets me in manner whenever he has a chance to use the language." Correct me if I get this wrong. Yes. He says, "Ni hao, Lin liang xie." Is that right? No, yeah. That's supposed to say hello, Mr. Lynn. Teddy always challenges himself to reach the next level. As his kindergarten partner, Teddy cannot only identify all the family members' manner but also can count from zero to one hundred. Teddy is an asset to the school community because of his willingness to demonstrate proper sportsmanship. With the practice of sportsmanship sometimes getting lost in the shuffle of current times of competition, Teddy shines his sportsmanship light. His positive attitude encourages other students to grow. Upon my visits to Holman two oh four, Teddy is always eager to share his work and tell me what he and his friends are learning about. His smile and kindness are great indicators of how he lives our brand kindness pledge every day. Teddy loves reading and any opportunity to use manipulatives to learn in a way that is very hands-on. His favorite subjects are Mandarin and science. He is wildly kind to his peers, always leaning out for his friends, and encouraging them to be their best. You'll often find Teddy consulting his friends when they are sad. When Teddy grows up, he wants to be a fireman so he can put out fires and protect people. Outside of school, Teddy loves to play with his dog Hunter and have snowball fights. When asked what it means to him when he won this award, Teddy said, "I feel good and I feel proud, and we feel good and proud as well at Holman too, Teddy." Ladies and gentlemen, please join in a round of applause for our November Student of the Month. At this time, I would like to welcome to the podium the Principal of Thomas G. Connors Elementary School, Mrs. Julianne.
At this time, I would like to call up Miss Destiny Boycott, the Connors Student of the Month for October. We are so excited to honor Destiny Boycott for Student of the Month. Destiny is a fifth-grade student in Miss Ariana RCRO's homeroom class. Miss Ariana RCRO is here today to celebrate the kid. Ms. RCRO shared that Destiny is an exceptionally conscientious student. She has put an admirable level of effort this year into her academics, and she has improved tremendously in her reading comprehension and math back four and eight. She comes to school each day prepared to learn. Destiny also distinguishes herself as a leader in her classroom. She leads by example and through empathy. Whether she is offering a helping hand to her teachers, teaching her classmates how to go through a math problem, or checking plans out when her life needs some friendly support, Destiny is always an amazing friend. Destiny sets the bar high in Holman three oh three. Destiny is also persistent and works through obstacles with determination. When she achieves something meritorious, she shows pride and confidence in her work. She is a great friend and a positive light to her Connors family. Destiny loves drawing, she likes doing homework, and loves to play outside. She absolutely adores her family. Her favorite subject is math, and when she grows up, she wants to be a teacher. Ms. Boycott shared that Destiny always comes to school with a helping hand, and she's always ready to work. And Ms. Marana shared that Destiny is the best ten-year-old drawer that she knows. At Connors, Destiny has made some wonderful friends. Destiny is a part of the Connors band and enjoys playing clarinet with Mr. Azarva and her friends. Her classmate, Jan Jay, shared that Destiny is kind and that she's so proud of Destiny that she got this Student of the Month. And at recess, she will always play with Mia and Brooklyn. Jan Jay shared that I'm so proud of Destiny because she works so hard, and she works so hard in math, and she always woke me up to clean up after herself, and she's so nice to everyone. I spoke with Destiny's mom, and she shared how she is so especially proud of Destiny. She shared that Destiny adores her classmates and absolutely loves school. She's also so proud of this incredible artist that Destiny has become. She uses her art to make cards and pictures for her loved ones in order to brighten their day. Her mom also shared that Destiny has the biggest heart. She is so helpful to her siblings and parents, offering any way that she can help out at home. Destiny, I could not be more proud of the incredible heart that you have and the empathy that you have and that you share with your siblings, parents, teachers, classmates, and our entire Connors family. Your warmth, generosity, and determination are such beautiful character traits. We are so incredibly proud of you. Please join me in giving a big round of applause for Miss Destiny. At this time, I'd like to call to the podium, Ms. Sky Lee Homelia, our Connors Student of the Month for November. Sky Lee Homelia was nominated by her first-grade teacher, Ms. Amanda Clatt. Ms. Clatt shared that Sky Lee is an amazing student classmate. She's caring, passionate, ambitious, and considerate. She goes above and beyond when it comes to the classroom. She takes her time to make sure she's always doing her best. She participates in class and shares her ideas for everyone. She can also be helpful to her classmates with their schoolwork or helping friends above the jacket. Sky Lee will often tell Ms. Clatt they love coming to school every day. Sky Lee is the first person every morning lined up with a smile on her face, ready to go inside and learn. She goes above and beyond without being prompted. Oftentimes during lessons, she will ask if she can read whatever is presented on board outside of the class, and she will reread the directions to one of her peers. Sky Lee has such a positive attitude and is a great mom, role mom for other students. She is very respectful and responsible. She makes sure to follow all school rules. Ms. Clatt mentioned that she is so lucky to have someone like Sky Lee in her class. When Sky Lee grows up, she wants to be an artist. She wants to be an artist because she wants to show her creativity to the world. She said that the money that she makes as an artist, she will give to charity. She enjoys drawing peaceful sceneries like random people walking through a park. She also listens to music while she draws. She loves music and loves to sing. Sky Lee wants to teach others the importance of art and music when she is older. Sky Lee's friend Ruby mentioned that she helps her with her spelling and writing. Her friend Katie shared that Sky Lee is always so kind and helpful to her. They have so much fun together when they play outside. She mentioned that Sky Lee will never let her friends play alone. She always makes sure that everyone is included. I asked Sky Lee's mom, which she's most proud of. She shared that Sky Lee is an incredible big sister to her four-year-old little brother named Jase. She reads to him in colors with him. She has incredible patience. Reading to her brother has helped Sky Lee improve in her already above-grade level reading. She leaves with such incredible expression. Mom is also so proud of Sky Lee's creativity as she loves to express herself in her drawing. She also has such incredible character. She's a member of the family team unit, always looking to help everyone in her family. Sky Lee is joined tonight by her proud mom, grandma, aunt Oliza, her father, her great sister Desiree, and her little brother, Jase. Sky Lee's board is really a reflection of her incredible family unit, where they are all a part of supporting Sky Lee for incredible success. Can everyone enjoy it? Please join me in giving Sky Lee a big round of applause. At this time, I would like to call up Vice Principal of Wallace Elementary School, Ms. Liz James.
Good evening. At this time, I would like to call to the podium, our Joseph F. Brandt of the Month for November. Truth was nominated by her very good teacher, Mr. Fernandez, for loving love and beyond expectations set forth by the Republican Board of Education and our Wallace School community. Truth consistently strives to help, encourage, and inspire others to do and feel their best. He is certainly a man who roars at Wallace by showing respect, open-mindedness, achievement, and responsibility. Whether in the classroom or on the playground, Truth is inclusive to everyone and to the empathy and kindness in all of the adults. When describing Truth in one word, Mr. Fernandez used the term leader. Truth exemplifies the traits and qualities of a strong leader, from his extraordinary character, character, and the growth of mind that has taught him everything. Truth is an attentive listener, eagerly and eagerly applies feedback from his teachers. He is truly a dedicated father and great friend. In the words of his friends, "Truth comes to school every day and does its job." As a learning partner, a friend shared that Truth is really good at math and helps me when I fail. And finally, they all agreed, "Truth is always so fun to play tag with because he takes turns and plays fair." Not only Truth can only be by example, but also lifts up his spirit and upholds his manner. Truth recently shared with Principal Shannon that he loves the Wallace School because he gets to learn new things and play with his friends. His favorite subject is math. Yes, he enjoys spelling test and reading story as well. Truth advocates for himself by asking for help when needed. And among his many interests are art, music, and board games. A few of his favorites are Twister, Guess Who, and Math Trivia. His absolute favorite art at school is Super Fun Friday, when his classmates attend his switch to celebrate their weekly achievements. When he grows up, Truth would like to have a career as a police officer so he can keep everyone safe and have an opportunity to drive the police car. Truth, we have no doubt you accomplish great things. Mr. Fernandez put it this way. Truth picked a school this year that inspired his heart, not only to learn, but also to improve on all the skills he already learns. Truth, you exemplify that it means to be a Wallace Wildcat, and we are so very proud to have you represent us here today. It is our honor to represent to you, Truth, that is our Wallace School Student of the Month. We are all looking tonight to celebrate our November Student of the Month, at law, Michael Cleo. Michael is a sweet, helpful, kind-hearted student, capable student at law. He was nominated as Student of the Month for November by his teacher, Ms. O'Kinsley. Michael is such an important part of the classroom and community. He is kind to his friends and is always quick to include everyone. He is also the person to offer help to a teacher or a classmate. If anyone is fighting a page, filling a water bottle, or following directions, Michael is always eager and willing to help. Michael is also a very well-able father, and he fulfills the path academic standards. However, it is his character that leads him to stand out each and every day. Every day, Michael roars at law by showing respect, open mindedness, achievement, and responsibility. Michael also has a passion for learning that is truly in action. He puts forth great effort in all of the classroom and homework. Additionally, whenever he needs a feedback, Michael is quick to approve and apply that right to the next task as well. Michael also displays perseverance and grace by always trying his best and entering new ideas. He is an extraordinary writer and able to inspire. At home, Michael loves playing with his head to switch, and he especially loves to be Mario Kart in his favorite game, The League of Legends. Michael also enjoys going back to school and creating opportunities in our class. Finally, when he grows up, Michael wants to be a toy maker. When asked about school, Michael said, "I love school so much. I love playing with Reese." And his classmates also commented on how much they enjoyed his friendship. One student from last year said they appreciate his marriage. And one friend of Michael, we play tag in the old picture of everyone who plays with him. While other students stated that he is very inclusive, Michael always asks me to play with him and play by myself. And lastly, one of his peers shared that he really likes making pictures. Michael, you are a special important member of our Wallace community. Thank you for roaring each and every day that we can now witness you all to accomplish. Please join me in congratulating Michael's son. At this time, I would like to welcome Sky Lee, working principal of the Wallace School of the Month.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence, and good evening, everyone. Please welcome to the podium, the Hoboken Middle School's October student, Azad Al. Throughout his academic career, Azad has been a conscientious dedicated student. In fact, he has maintained an A-plus average throughout his three years at Hoboken Middle School. Azad is a member of the National Honor, National Virginia Honor Society, and has consistently been a part of the Johns Hopkins C T Y program since third grade. According to seniority dad, Azad is an exceptional student. He is very respectful and much harder in Spanish class. He has an outstanding role model. She goes on to say that Azad gets to know well his peers, and he is always willing to help students who might be struggling with the material. It has truly been a pleasure to have Azad who has been stressed for three and secondary years. Azad is described by his teachers as having strong intellectual skills. He adds insight and generates value in class discussions. And although Azad may seem quiet, he is observer and leader among his peers. Ms. Quitt added that Azad has chosen to challenge himself by taking casual one this year. His impressive focus and listening skills support his own learning and those of mine. Azad is also described as dedicated to his studies and quite an impressive writer. Ms. Dominique added that Azad's Americanism essay, waiting for the Elsalage essay contest, was one of the best that she has ever read. Azad encapsulated the topic of what is your American dream eligibility, creating an essay that is both personal and universal as well. In my short time at Holman Azad, I am impressed with his strong focus, ability to connect with his peers, and willingness to help out our school community. He embodies all the characteristics of what we are looking for in our middle school tires. Azad described himself as an hard worker and a passionate writer with a love for English and history. He loves trying new things, food, travel, and learning, even when he's on the clock. He is an avid reader of nonfiction in his spare time. He likes to edit music, play sports, and hang out with his friends. And of course, Azad enjoys spending time with his very supportive family. Azad's friends, Gate Anglish, Logan Phillips, Liberson, Ben Gordon, and Jonathan Lee, all described Azad as a great friend. They go on to say that he has many traits that separate him from others, such as his dedication, his great listening skills, how much he cares about people, and most of all, his empathy, which makes him a great brother, son, cousin, and friend. The boys go on to say that Azad is the kind of friend who always has the facts, and most importantly, always has something to teach them. Finally, they say Azad is a spirited kid who always has a smile on his case. Azad's dream is to attend Johns Hopkins University to go to be, to be a lawyer. A quote that resonates with Azad is from Pizza Diando, "No matter where you're from, your dreams are bad." What a great quote. Please join me in congratulating the Hoboken Middle School October Student of the Month. At this time, please welcome to the podium, the Hoboken Middle School's November student, Sienna Garcia. Sienna is a seventh-grade student who is nominated by Ms. Painter, her mystery for outstanding academic achievement and her dedication to the classroom and learning community. for outstanding academic achievement and her dedication to the classroom and learning community. Sienna demonstrates a bold mindset on a daily basis. She always seeks ways to improve her writing and her understanding of the content in class and is actively participating in classroom activities. In recent official discussion in the LA, Sienna received 100% credibility to not only make strong claims about the current novel, but to provide strong evidence in the text to support her opinions. In discussions, Sienna makes an effort to improve others in the conversation. She is a natural leader and models for others what it means to be an excellent student. Sienna recently joined the academic team as she engages in rigorous academic competitions, market teams, D1N simulations, and mock trials, challenging herself and others to push themselves out of their comfort zone. In math class, Sienna contributes to class discussions, helps her classmates in models perseverance, and they build a mindset. During more prepared ones, Sienna was adamant about mastering operations and rational numbers. She asked for extra practice and even stayed after school one day to get help. Sienna's commitment to learning is infectious and inspiring. She strives to do her absolute best every day. She honoring an exceptional student, Sienna is a wonderful person. One of Sienna's classmates, Laura Dorch, says that Sienna is a great student. She focuses in class and knows that her biggest priority is her education. When Sienna went to the house and she felt about being recognized as student of the month, she replied, "I was recognized as student of the month when I was at Congress, but it still feels amazing. It makes me feel really good about myself." Sienna really enjoys theater and was recently cast in a middle school play, I Hate Non-Hysterics. After high school, she turns on attending Harvard or Cornell with a major in theater or dance. As her vice principal, I remember Sienna as a great student and a role model to her peers. I even remember Sienna getting recognized for student of the month in fourth grade. Now, as her principal at Hoboken Middle School, I could not be more proud that Sienna continues to grow as a person and remains a leader in all aspects of her life. We are proud of you and confident that the long-term goals that you have set for yourself will soon become reality. Please join me in congratulating Hoboken Middle School's student of the month. This time, I would like to pause the podium. The principal of Hoboken High School, Ms. B. Pejger.
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations to the man behind the camera, our October student of the month, Max DeGallo. Often, Max, a senior at Hoboken High School, is like OJ Simpson in the U. H. Briefcase in hand, he is running from class to class dodging students, obstacles in the hallway, moving towards his next place. A lot of energy this young man has, and he has put his energy into his schooling and his love of Mr. McCallie's video class. Mr. McCallie shared Max is a dedicated student and filmmaker. He looks very hard on class to find the best shots, making sure it is well-lit and that the performance is up to its standards. He also worked hard for our district covering the board meetings and district events. I'm proud of Max and his efforts and thrilled that he got this recognition. Mrs. Murray added, "Max conducts himself professionally when he assists Mr. McCallie with video reactions. Last year, I remember him handling and recording a couple of holiday greetings pretty independently. I see him at many school and district events doing his work, and it is clear he takes his responsibility seriously. Max is a real asset to the school and to the video department in particular." Max does very well in those classes with a solid 4.0 GPA. He continues to challenge himself, and when I reviewed his first mark of year of grades, I noticed his lowest grade was a 96. But his other grades were 104, 111, and 2100s. There is no senior artist taking place here. Max describes himself as focused, driven, hardworking, and creative. Max received a judges award for distinction at the Hudson County Alliance of Teen Audiences last year for talking. He has been on the high honor roll consistently and is being student of the month in private lists. Max is a great asset to our film department as he spends hours recording different activities and also involves in the editing portion of his work and using Photoshop. Next up for Max is college acceptances. He has applied to Bluefield College, Cole Blenner, Robert Morris University, St. Elizabeth's University, University of Maryland, University of Pittsburgh, and Rockraps, to name a few. I asked Max a few questions, and here is what he said. He is a man of few words. His dream college is the University of Pittsburgh, and what he plans to major in is still undecided. In his downtime, he makes digital videos, plays video games, some very light coding and computer stuff, and likes to walk in them. His motivation to be a good student is good grades, which he called money eventually, and he likes money. Money is good. Max, we are wishing you all the best success, and we can't wait to hear everything that's in place. Next up, our fifth-year student. Congratulations, Glenn McAllo. I think there's a TV series in the making for this young student. He is like the all-American boy in everyone I spoke to. Glenn, it's been a pleasure to have as a student this year and in all the years at Hoboken High School. He leads by example, exudes positive energy, and is a tremendous student. He is an honest, passionate, and tenacious learner. Challenges do not discourage him, and he means every day with determination. Over the past four years, he has taken seven AP-level courses and boasts well over 4.0 GPA and is a constant on our high honor roll. Glenn serves as a role model to the younger students in a way that he stays on top of his grades and manages his time for the many clubs and activities for which he participates in. I see him encouraging others by his example and with his natural leadership. He is an example of a true redneck. Glenn is a member of the National Honor Society, Spanish National Honor Society, and has over 20 hours of community service this year. He is a council member of the student government, a member of the Hispanic Culture Club, African-American Culture Club, as well as the International Club. Glenn is an amazing student athlete who is always looking to better himself and his team, both academically and athletically. He has emerged as a leader this year, and the Super Football Conference has recognized him as the young man of the year for his division. This is all Glenn showed civic redneck pride in his community by assisting the athletic department in our annual punt, pass, kick competition at Louis T. Tackler Jr. Stadium. He is truly an athletic director's dream as he was a three-sport athlete in basketball, baseball, and wrestling. Glenn attended the American Legion Jersey Boys Stadium at YU and was awarded three college credits for college and any college home in the state of New Jersey. I checked in with Glenn about a few things. I asked him what his favorite memory of high school was, and he said, "Going to see Hamilton on Broadway in his junior year." What drives him? I thought this was interesting. The final outcome. I think about how I'm going to feel and what I'm going to be able to do once I complete all my necessary assignments. It's the idea of doing and being something greater that pushes me. After graduation, I plan to attend the University of New Haven, majoring in cybersecurity. I also plan to enroll in their ROTC program. With this, I will commission it to the Army as a second lieutenant with the hopes of pursuing a career as a tactical intelligence officer. My dream college is any college that has the necessary requirements for my career. In my downtime, I enjoy playing football. I also enjoy the satisfying relaxation after a hard day's work. There is nothing better than finishing all of your work and doing absolutely nothing afterwards. Although there are many people that come to mine, I mainly hang out with my girlfriends, Gina Bruce, who's here with him tonight, Gina, supporting him. His other good friends that I have, Aiden Feeden, Fedencore, Kyle Holstrom, Wood and Candy, and any other person whom I share a positive friendship with. Glenn, you are truly good to the high school, and I look forward to hearing the great things you will accomplish.
Sorry, just a second. This time, I'm thinking about all of the recommendations. Congratulations to all of our students. We wish you the best and best luck in the future. We can't wait to see what the future holds for each of you. And now, I'd like to invite our middle school student government representative, Olivia Dunn, to do this update on Hoboken Middle School.
Hello, my name is Olivia. I'm newly elected Hoboken Middle School student government representative, ALVIA Board Representative for the remainder of the year. Our student council this year consists of an executive board and senior representatives, as well as regular members. Serving as our executive board for the 2022 through 2023 school year are, Secretary of State, Sophia Cass, Sue Pujol, Vice President, Laura Bar, President, Emma Henderson, Sixth Grade Representative, Felicity Galah, Seventh Grade Representative, Al Jamin, Eighth Grade Representative, Gage Engle. In November, Hoboken Middle School conducted the New Jersey School Improvement Survey with all students, staff, and parents. Dr. Basinger and the school contact team will run and report and create an actual plan based on the data that was received. Dr. Basinger shared that the number of students, parents, and staff who participated drastically increased in the month. Thank you to our HMS community for participating in the New Jersey School Improvement Survey last month. November 4th, March 1st, Assembly in Year Three at HMS. All HMS students participated in the Tiger Pad kickoff rally led by Mr. Swirpy. The HMS staff and our MC, Mr. Odom, with matching Tiger Pad teachers, the auditorium above a lab in front of the school pride. We all cheer at our peers during trivia at the minute to make it. Our next type of heart attack will take place in January, focusing on character development in the school environment. The HMS Theater Department held additions for the Flight Ie. on Wednesday, which will run from February 10th through February 12th. Some of our students showcased theatrical and musical talents in the Musical Yearing Camp, which was held at our high school. Our Music Department also had been optioned for the Winter Concert, which will be held on December 16th at the Hoboken Middle School. Break the leg to our HMS musicians and veterans this winter. The National Junior Honor Society held a food drive during the month of November and decorated our school for the holiday season. HMS also partnered with Stevens Institute of Technology to provide Thanksgiving baskets to families in our school community. Move This World has returned to Hoboken Middle School. Move This World is a video-based social, emotional, learning curriculum that will be interactive into students, finding and performing their class. Move This World helps our students practice on how to identify and recognize their emotions, build critical social skills, and connect with themselves in a way, navigate challenges that they may be experiencing. Students at Hoboken Middle School also participated in their first personal growth program of 2022 through 2023 school year. This day, we make a reflective lesson in decision-making, college careers, readiness, wellness, growth mindset, and global education. On Tuesday, November 29th, Hoboken Middle School students participated in a school-wide ceremony hosted by Rachel's Challenge. The Hoboken Public Education Foundation funded the event, which brought awareness to kindness amongst students, faculty, and staff. Our students were recip, recipt, and we have a group of 65 students that are coming up with a base to make an impact on our school community and encourage people to be the best ready and possible for influential messages about believing in yourself, showing kindness to others, practicing positive classes, showing appreciation, and believing in yourself. In addition, the student council turned up with a free-to-go children for winter training dream gift drive. The student council involved volunteers from National Junior Honor Society to deliver the gifts to the community, Hoboken Community Center on September. Thank you to the Hoboken Board of Education for this opportunity to share an update on an exciting event that's always happening in our students. Good day, everyone.
I'm so happy to hear what's going on at Middle School. And next, we'd like to talk to Nikki from Hoboken High School for the state government update.
Hello, my name is Nikki. I am the Hoboken High School Student Government Board Representative. It is an honor to speak to you this evening. The Hoboken High School Student Government and Hoboken High School Student Activities Office had a productive and busy month. This past month, with a successful morning announcements program, participation in Hoboken Public School District's Family Math Games and Learning Convention, class council meetings, and organizational news, successful food drive and Red Wing on the Shelf's government dinner. Our second annual student government induction ceremony was a hit to us. Sixty students were sworn into the student government positions. It was an amazing experience. News from around the nest. Hoboken High School hockey. The Hoboken High School ice hockey team will be playing their first game in program history. The game will take place on Wednesday, December 21st, at Bayam High School Icerink at 3:30 PM against Bayam High School. And we, the next thing on the agenda is best buddies. We have over 25 students registered this year with best buddies, and we are finalizing the last pair of buddy matches. It is incredibly exciting to see how motivated our students are to promote the inclusion of those with intellectual or developmental disabilities in all that is happening across Hoboken High School and the district. Thank you for your continued support. Rockin' Red Wings. On November 6th, the Rockin' Red Wings made their first-ever appearance at the Atlantic Coast Championships at Rishik Stadium. The band goes to 11th and 8th in percussion, competing against the best bands from New Jersey, Pennsylvania, New York, Maryland, and Delaware. In more recent news, the concert band and chorus spread a holiday cheer this past weekend, performing at the Hoboken Tree Landing, the Housing Authority Holiday Party, and the Holiday Party. Catch the district winter concerts this week with the elementary groups performing tomorrow and the middle school and high school divisions performing Friday night at 7:00 PM. Hoboken Field of Heroes. The Hoboken High School Student Government held its second annual Field of Heroes on Wednesday, November 9th. Over 225 labs were planted at Louise M. Tiberian Stadium, and it was a wonderful tribute to our heroes. Thank you very much for your support of our Hoboken Heroes. And finally, to remember the support, our monthly luncheon of Hoboken High And finally, to remember the support, our lunch and luncheon with Hoboken High School Administration was held Monday, December 19th, at 12:45 a.m. We would also like to present in front of you your holiday greeting cards for you and your families from the Hoboken High School Student Government and Hoboken High School Hispanic Culture Club. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak, and we look forward to seeing you at our events. Well done.
I'm glad we can always bring you here and have a good fall. Next, before we move on to the business portion of our meeting, the board is going to go into an executive session.
Okay, it is now 8:30, and we are just coming back from an executive session. Do I have a motion to resume the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Katamatory.
Yes.
Ms. Delara.
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre.
Yes.
Ms. Kana.
Yes.
Ms. Clufel.
Yes.
Ms. McGurk.
Yes.
Ms. Simons.
Yes.
Ms. Takirian.
Yes.
Ms. Angley.
Yes.
Okay, next, we'll go into committee reports. Ms. Lopez, do you have a business administrator's report tonight?
No report, just wanted to note that the official election results are included in tonight's agenda.
Thank you. We'll start with curriculum, Ms. Simons.
Good evening. The curriculum committee met virtually on Wednesday, December 7th, at 12:00 p.m. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mrs. Rodriguez Gomez, Ms. Katamatory, Ms. Delara, and myself. There are no agenda items for approval. I would like to just note a few items. The district is currently applying for a fully or partially funded Mandarin exchange teacher for the 23-24 school year. The Teacher of Critical Language Grant is a program of the Bureau of Educational and Cultural Affairs of the U.S. Department of State. It is designed to increase the study and acquisition of important world languages in U.S. schools. Updates and reviews of the middle school language arts curriculum and high school Algebra I curriculum are both underway. The Math Night was a big success. Approximately 350 participants learning math through games livened up the high school. The extra game packages will be delivered to the math classrooms. Professional development and planning for the next school year is also underway, and the next PGP Personal Growth Day is on December 23rd, the day before winter break. And I am also very excited to share that the first robotics team at the Hoboken High School has started. The robotics team joined the first NJ League and are working on their competition problem for this year, and will participate in trial competitions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to facilities, Ms. McGurk.
Good evening. The Facilities Committee met virtually on Wednesday, December 7th, 2022. In attendance were Ms. Angley, Ms. Kana, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, Mr. Callagie, and myself. There are two items on the agenda for facilities, and we recommend that both be approved. The first is the monthly safety drill report for all school buildings, and the second is two facilities requests. ZOG Sports is requesting use of JFK Stadium for outdoor adult soccer and football leagues to take place on Wednesdays and Sundays from January 25th through March 12th, 2023. Next Basket Wins is requesting use of the Hoboken High School Gymnasium for an adult men's basketball league commencing March 7th and ending May 23rd, 2023, and we recommend both of those items for board approval. Thank you, and that's my report. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. Delatorre.
Good evening. The Finance Committee met on Wednesday, December 7th. In attendance were Ms. Good, Ms. Lopez, Ms. Kana, Ms. McGurk, Ms. Angley, and myself. All agenda items were discussed, and we recommend all for approval. A couple of items to note. There was a $13,700 invoice to Caulfield Associates for a topographic survey at JFK Field, which was done as part of this past January's referendum. We have removed this invoice from this agenda as we are determining whether we have already paid it. Second, the board would like to extend its appreciation to the anonymous donors who have contributed over $2,800 for the Passport to Learning programs to various schools across our district. Your donation is greatly appreciated. That's it. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Governance, Ms. Takirian.
Hi, good evening. The Governance and Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, December 7th. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Katamatory, Mr. Clufel, and myself. The committee discussed all agenda items, and we recommend all for approval. In the Governance and Personnel Agenda items, as is typical throughout the school year, you will see a number of agenda points for transfers, appointments, terminations, and resignations of teachers and other staff, including paraprofessionals, teachers, substitutes, co-curricular advisors, coaches, Passport to Learning, and district family events. As usual, there are agenda items for the approval of an array of valuable field trips and workshops. Additionally, in the Policy section of the agenda, the second reading of the revised HIB policies on the agenda today, and it was on, the first reading was on the agenda last month. There were a few non-agenda items discussed during our meeting. CUSAC facilities walkthroughs were completed at three out of our five facilities, and we received all points for this portion of the CUSAC review. We await the final CUSAC results from the New Jersey Department of Education. We recently implemented a new attendance management system with our staff, which will provide better tracking and provide principals consolidated information for planning the day. We discussed the far-reaching challenges of substitute teacher shortages and ideas for attracting and retaining substitutes. We talked a little bit about the school attendance communications that we send out to parents, and we discussed school choice applications and the lottery for qualified applicants. That concludes my report, and wish everybody a lovely holiday and a happy 2023.
Thank you. Good wellness, Ms. Delara.
Sure. The Wellness Committee met virtually on December 7th. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Katamatory, Ms. Simons, and myself. There are no items on the agenda for approval tonight, but a few items I'd like to point out tonight to the audience is that we will be applying for the local Recreation Improvement Grant, which will help fund improvements, and particularly to our current pool at Hoboken High School. We are excited to welcome Studio L and partner with our Hoboken High School and Begin a Dance Team. And that concludes my report. Happy holidays and a happy new year.
Thank you. Well, tonight, I would like to thank, as part of my report, thank both Ms. Delara and Ms. Simons for their hard work and dedication to the Hoboken Public School District throughout their time on the Board of Education. The Hoboken students were very lucky to have both of you on their side, and while your time on the board is coming to an end, I have no doubt that you will still advocate for the children of Hoboken in your own individual ways. I thank you both. Do any other board members want to add anything to that? Okay.
I think we probably all feel the same way, and just no reason to all say it. But Sharon, thank you for your words, and to Sheila and to Joyce.
Thank you.
Your contributions are well-known, and you will be missed. Just to add, I've known Joyce and Sheila for a very long time, since our Wallace days and on the PTO. So, thank you so much for everything you've done. It's been wonderful working with both of you, and look forward to working with you in other ways. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to public comments on agenda items.
Yes, we have one speaker for agenda items. Mandy Sunja.
Just bear with me one second. I just want to make a statement before we continue with comments. And this is just a reminder, before we open the public comments, that over the years and more recently, the board has been asked why it does not prohibit or stop comments about school district employees from individuals who speak during the public comment portion of the meeting. The short answer is that the law prevents the board from censoring comments made about district personnel. The board does not condone, nor is the board a party to comments as such. However, just because a speaker may have the right to say what he or she feels, it does not absolve a speaker from liability for any defamatory comments that an employee may bring against the speaker. Should speakers say something that subjects them to a civil suit, the responsibility falls squarely on the speaker and not on the board. I also want to remind speakers about board policy. Please state your name, municipality of residence, and business affiliation, if any. Speakers are allowed five minutes, and we will quietly motion at the 30-second mark when you have 30 seconds left. Please address all comments to the chair. Board policy states that boards welcome comments on matters of interest to the board, but this is not an opportunity for dialogue or debate between speakers and board members or the superintendent. With that being said, you have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Mandy. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I had a couple questions about the grant, the resolved allocations, 517,000 this funding from the New Jersey Schools Development Authority. I was wondering, is this going to, like, where is this funding actually going to? Is this like emergent projects and capital maintenance projects? So I was just curious about that. The other question I had was, I just, you know, this building apparently is being teared down. I guess there's a state, I guess there's like money, like $30 million. There's something, you know, I don't know. I just wanted to know about that. Is there, is that gonna happen? Sorry, this is my first time speaking and my first time being here, and I'm sure you guys know of me, because, you know, but I just know there's a huge problem with space and kids and, you know, but I also want to, from somebody who's been in this community and went through the pandemic and everything, you know, tearing down this building when it's near like parks that we use, and it's in the middle of like the whole entire, you know, historic, and not just that, it's like, we already went through a pandemic, and we finally got together, and we use this park all the time, and it's in the middle of town, and there's gonna be traffic all over the place if this building gets teared down. I do believe that's a lot of money to take to not accept, but I also know, and then it would increase the taxes, but I do understand that, like, maybe right now, because we also share, I know there's kids, and, you know, there's a space issue, but there's also like us as a community using this space together, and if we can just think about that, and after a pandemic, we're finally getting together, and it's being near like a park, so. So I've just had questions about that. If the state can, instead of doing a whole tear down, if it's gonna be like a partial tear down, or if it's gonna affect the parks or anything that I use with my dog and other places? I just had a question about that.
Again, this can't be a dialogue, but I will say there's no plans to tear this building down. Yeah.
Okay.
So, as the chair of the Facilities Committee, this facility was targeted, is on the list from the SDA, which is the institution, the state agency that's giving that grant of the 500 and something thousand dollars.
Yeah, this grant over here.
Okay. They have schools on their list for rehabilitation. This is a school that was on their list for rehabilitation. It still sits on a list for rehabilitation, not to be torn down, but to be rehabbed. So it's a historical building, it's 100 and something years old, so the plan was to rehab the building, not to tear down the building. There is no plan to tear down this building or any other Hoboken Public School building. No plan to tear any of them down. We have a huge number of kids who need to be in building, so tearing down a building is not a luxury that we have.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah. The SDA grant money, through the course of the beginning of the year, Dr. Johnson will determine the projects that need to be funded by that. That's money that the state gives us, because they do have responsibility for our schools to rehab 100-plus-year-old buildings.
Yes.
Which have issues with plumbing, like anybody who lives in an old building in Hoboken. So that will be used to fund those projects.
Yeah.
And then it will not have to come out of our, you know, budgeted capital maintenance projects.
Is there any grants going towards education that you guys have, you know, accepted recently?
So again, this can't be a dialogue or a back and forth, but I think if you come to our meetings consistently and you see that we're applying for grants and all that sort of stuff.
Okay, because just want to make sure it's not just for, you know, money's not just being accepted for construction. I get it, these buildings do need to get updated. I live in an old building, I understand that. I just wanted to make sure, because we do share this space with these parks, and we have dogs and everything, when there is huge renovations, it affects everybody, especially, you know, you know what I'm saying? So that's all I have to say. Thank you so much. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Anybody else? Speaker? Next speaker? Oh, okay. So then we'll move on to consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Katamatory.
Yes.
Ms. Delara.
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre.
Yes.
Ms. Kana.
Yeah.
Mr. Clufel.
Yes.
Ms. McGurk.
Yes.
Ms. Simons.
Yes.
Ms. Takirian.
Yes.
Ms. Angley.
Yes.
All motions passed.
Okay, now we'll move on to comments on both agenda and non-agenda items.
We have three speakers. The first is Mandy. Ms. Sunja?
Mandy.
Mandy. Did you want to talk again? Okay. Melissa Blanco.
Hi.
Please state your name.
Melissa Blanco. I don't have any conflicts of interest here, just as a resident. I'd ask that you let me know if you have any issues hearing me, as my voice is having some issues. If I'm speaking louder, don't interpret that I'm somehow disrespecting you. I can't modulate with some things going on with my throat. Also, I ask for some accommodation in the hearing. With the microphone, this lady on the end, I did not hear well, because, not that you were speaking so quickly, but with the reverberations, the words blended, so I didn't really hear what you had to say. And I rely on a combination of hearing and lips, so at times when people were speaking, I couldn't see lips moving, and then I realized the speaker had hair in front, so it would be helpful to be able to hear everything as well as speak. Thank you. Now I'll get on with it. I'd like to be able to participate in the school board. I'd like to be able to do that at home and have spent a considerable amount of time trying to get information as well as openness. And if you look at the last election, none of this information has been fulfilled. And as a matter of fact, I just spoke with the people who ran, and they did exactly what happened with all the layers of people in trying to get information, was not to give a direct answer, but to sidestep. So, we're coming upon an assessment, as I do an evaluation of just education in general. My background is management consulting and in new industries. I have to look at, of course, not just a local point, but many points, and I have to begin with this point, which is a local district and the county and the state. So, as a start to the information, I've been unable to get fulfilled non-personal information, operable information from the keeper of the record in recent information. So you're all coming upon an assessment period. What do you do with an assessment? Well, you look at the last one. I'm not looking to go even historical. The first step is getting the last one. I have just outright been sidestepped, denied, not corresponded with. I think we need to, I think you need to know that as a board, that your business administrator, who is keeper of the record, cannot even give something as clear as the assessments that should be on hand, things that the superintendent, or in the superintendent, non-personal in the superintendent's contract. She works every day in the same office, could ask for it. I've been waiting weeks and weeks. I went in person during the election, and in meetings, they would say, "Oh, you've never even been inside of a school," when it was the principal of the high school. She had no idea or recollection that she's met me before in the school. When I went to go in person, because Oprah says immediately, and it had been weeks, and I asked for an appointment, I wasn't invited in. I had a security guard standing next to me in the cold of the door. So, you know, get your acts together about abusing the public. The idea of helping is not about us giving more money, but being involved. And I'm gonna leave it at that, because that's a chunk for you to digest at this time, because... And I'm gonna leave it at that, because that's a chunk for you to digest at this time, because I actually went to a meeting to see something, and I get reports back from schools and teachers and parents who said, "What was she doing at this meeting?" It was a public meeting. Unlike being accused as if I'm some type of spy or something, or unwelcome. I like to see what's going on, okay? I can give advice on stuff, and that advice may be critical to you, but it's input, and it's not personally damaging. It's factual. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think you should hold on to this, consider it a matter of record, and try to abide by what, you may not know what's written. This could have been given to you by the state in New Jersey, I don't know, but certainly when you use words like "increase," that implies a metric. It's not merely improve. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did give you your 30 seconds. I did tell you when your 30 seconds was up. I did. And the final speaker is Manuel Rivera Soler.
Just had a instruction happen here. Good evening, Madam Chair. I hope you are able to hear me correctly and loudly. Again, as you have mentioned in your statement, I believe that I'm speaking for myself. When a person comes up to speak in front of this board, should always be respectful and maintain their comments as neutral or as directed to what they're specifically speaking about, and nothing personal. At least I try to do that, and I hope you understand. I'm going to
Please just state your name.
I'm sorry, I completely forgot.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Manuel Rivera Soler, 529 Park Avenue. So I just want to read Madam President, Madam Chairwoman, just because I would like it to be in the record, and I would like it for it to be something that is thought about in curriculums and in speaking to the children as we go along, and let it be an example, because I speak about something that's unbelievable, that's happening frequently in our communities. Hate and hate should not be tolerated in our school district, in our city, in our county, even in our state. Bigotry, racism, intentional or unintentional or otherwise, should not be tolerated in our district. Biases, dangerous political discord, anti-Semitic rhetoric, homophobia, discrimination practices towards LGBTQ+ communities, and I could go on and on, Madam Chair. But having said that, I just would like that as you are churning about a new leaf in outgoing members and new coming members, when we start the year, we could apply these methods to ourselves, as well as to the community and the curriculum, if it could be done. And when I mean that, I don't mean that we have to hit people over the head or tell them that they're doing something wrong. We just express our love and our respect for others, as I am doing now, to you and to every member of the board here, and it does not matter, because I speak in many, many different places, and everywhere, a message of tolerance should be always expressed. And how could you put in a curriculum? I have no idea. That's why we have you, the Brain Trust, and others. And, you know, this is one of the important things that I wanted to discuss and speak of today, as well as, I would like to thank the members that are outgoing for their service to the community. We know that it was a hard year. Sometimes we agreed, sometimes we didn't, but your service is respected. And to the incoming members, we want to work with you, we want to do and welcome you as well, and of course, we will have disagreements as well. So expect that too. But otherwise, have a happy holidays, and I appreciate you. Thank you very much, and God bless you all.
Thank you. Happy holidays to all, and with that being said, that concludes our meeting. Do I have a motion? Oh, I'm so sorry, yeah.
So first, I want to thank all of the candidates for raising their hands and putting themselves out there to campaign and run for a seat on the board. I would like to congratulate Antonio Leslie and, of course, my fellow board colleague, Alex. I chose to be more involved with the Hoboken schools because I admire the direction that the Board of Education and administration was taking our district. It's been an honor not only to run for a seat on this board, but to be elected by our amazing community to represent them. It has been a pleasure to serve on the board with all of you for the last four years. Your unwavering commitment to Hoboken Public Schools is remarkable. I am proud to be a part of this team and this family who strives to fight for equity for all the children of Hoboken. I am proud of all of our students. They continue to work hard to show the community that they will make incredible achievements, and they deserve to be respected and supported by all of us. Over the last three months, I've had the privilege of being in the high school with the district's oldest learners. They have their whole lives ahead of them and are soaking in everything the school has to offer. This board must continue to fight to give them the best opportunities. Thank you, Dr. Johnson, for all of the progress over the last six years. You have proven yourself to be selfless, and we are lucky. You continue to want to serve this district. Your effective leadership and concern for students is inspiring and a major reason why my commitment to the Hoboken Public Schools will not end. Thank you, and happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Simons.
Okay. I'm sorry, I don't have anything written down, but, you know, Joyce, you said it so perfectly. I just, I want to just thank everybody, you know, for trusting in me and for voting in me. Nine years ago, I attended my first board meeting, and I've only missed one since then, and that's because I gave birth to my third baby. You know, serving on this board has definitely opened my eyes to a lot of different things that goes on behind, you know, the scenes and behind, you know, all the hard work that our teachers and our paraprofessionals and, you know, our principals and our vice principals, so much that they do for our kids, and I have just been so honored and, you know, so blessed to have been able to have this opportunity to serve for six years. I have been just, you know, just so happy to serve with Dr. Johnson. She's been, she's been a great leader. I've learned so much from her, and I couldn't be happier to have two new board members step up to the plate, and I couldn't find better people to, you know, take my seat. So congratulations to Leslie and Antonio, and I know that Alex will continue to do good things for our district. Thank you to my trustees. You know, I just, this has just been a great, great ride. I will be here, I'll just be there, and so, you know, I'm not going anywhere. I'll still be coming here every Tuesday of every month. I'll just be sitting over there, so thank you.
Thank you. Well, that concludes our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.